I guess I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'll be there again for the four commissioners on Tuesday, June 10th. It is 7:02 PM. I assume that we're not expecting any remote attendance, correct?
Sarah's doing her own ordnance.
Oh, okay. So then we move forward to moving or to accepting the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda with the following changes. Removing item under A, under new business, receiving the FY 2025-2026 combined budget, and appropriation ordinance 2025-03, and adding an executive session immediately after public comment. Second.
All right, so that's moved in seconded. Does the board will call both?
It's good to know. You got it.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that is passed unanimously. So that is our new agenda. So now we'll move forward to public comment. Any member of the public may make a brief statement this time at the end of public petition rules of the board. If we have any members of the public wishing to make a comment. All right, well saying none. We will go ahead into our new meeting staff instructions. So first one we have is Veronica Castro Cruz. Shane Noel, let me introduce Veronica. Someone welcome up.
Thank everyone knows me. Shane Noel, I'm the facility maintenance supervisor. This is Veronica.
How long have you been here?
Eleven.
Oh, why?
Actually, eleven. It's ten days. So this is Veronica Castro Cruz. She replaced Della. I think everybody probably remembers Della. She was here for thirty-plus years. Retired back in, I think, April. Veronica's stepped in and she's done a great job. Never any follow-up with her. She's on it. So the windows were cleaned today. So just Veronica.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Well, what can I say about me? I'm Mexican, Hispanic. Mexicans are well-known to be hard-working people. And I think I represent my country very well. But I've been here in the USA for twenty-five years. They bring me here as a child, so I didn't have any option. And I'm loving it. And I've been in Champaign-Urbana for eighteen years. And I will not move back to the South. Yes, everybody knows how the South. So I love it here. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Well, welcome.
Thanks, Veronica.
Thank you.
And Shane, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Shane.
Thank you.
So next we've got Austin and Nick. Why don't you guys come together? So Rich is not here this evening. He's got a conference. So I want to introduce our two new ground staff here. Austin Smythe has been with us for, what, close to a month now, or?
Two months.
Two months?
Many.
Wow, that's quick, yeah. And Nick Seaver is kind of our new joint on staff. Nick, you've been here for about three weeks.
A week and two days.
Right, so I should say. Rich, you're supposed to be giving the press. You guys want to introduce yourselves and talk about what you do for the park district? Want to introduce yourself, Austin?
Yeah, I'm Austin Smythe. Took over for Georgina. Luckily, I was able to get about five weeks with her to get an introduction to what she's been doing with landscaping here and figure out the large shoes that I've got to fill with that. But I come from a background of brewing, science, and maintenance systems in those category. But I've been teaching myself ecology and grew up in nature and come from a long background of people that worked in conservation and similar fields. So I'm excited to bring all of my experience to the park district here.
Welcome, Melissa.
Hi, my name is Nick Seaver. And I took over for Devin, who moved over to Ball Field Maintenance. And I've been here for a week and a half. I've spent years and years and years and years mowing, so I wanted to make that a professional thing as opposed to a unprofessional thing. And loved it so far, except minus the poison ivy.
And you spent today with the mowing crew, is that correct?
Yep, yep. Spent today.
Great, great. And then Austin, you're also a master naturalist, is that correct?
Yep, yeah, I'm a master naturalist. I actually just came over from Foraging Forest, the extension office. So I do attend a lot of the continuing education program that they offer over there. And I volunteer with the forest preserve when I get the chance. Couple of trails at Homer Lake that I've been working on for the last three or four years here. And I live in Old East Urbana. Bought a house over there in Denver, but I've lived here in Urbana since 2001.
Well, welcome to you both.
Thanks.
That's huge.
She's probably talking to David. Next to Melissa.
Sorry, David just called, I'm sorry. All right, I gotta go to David.
So Melissa is our new office manager at the nature center. She's been there, what, about two months now?
Yes, I started at the end of March.
And did you have some part-time with us as well?
Yeah, so previously, my first summer with the park district was 2011, actually. I was an inclusion aide for nature day camp. From there, I went on to come back as reception and animal care from 2013 to 2016-ish, never take. And then I moved away for a little bit, as a supervisor at the theme society for a while, solid position, and I'm still glad to be back for our district.
And she goes by Missy?
I do go by Missy, yes.
She's been doing a fantastic job. Camps are in full speed and we've got full camps everywhere, so.
Yep, learning lots of things every day, but feel pretty good about it, so.
And has the nature center store reopened?
Yes, we have reopened that. You know, trying to cultivate some things, some new things. We're keeping the integrity of what we kind of went on at the same time.
And David was going to be here, I'm sure.
Yeah, sorry about that. He had just called me and was like, "I'm sorry, he's making up," so he's going to be here.
Well, I just want to say that, I would've said if he was here, he's been doing an awesome job of filling two roles.
He is, yes.
All the staff we met last week and everything's going well. So I just want to give kudos to David, even though he's not able to attend, it sounds like, tonight.
And you as well, just everybody in the nature center stepping up, filling voids as we make some transition changes.
It's definitely very transitional, but we're making the best of it.
Yeah, I appreciate you, thank you. I have a shoebox for you guys. I should've brought it in.
Oh.
I mean, I'll be home tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to you too.
Taking shoe, I'm not just handing out random shoeboxes. I'm taking shoes. I just want to know if you're wearing shoes.
That's the easiest person I remember.
Well, welcome aboard, I'm glad.
Thank you. I see all the things on Facebook, so.
Thank you, everyone.
You guys are welcome to go. You do not have to, you do not feel like you have to stay.
You can stay.
You might want to.
If you go ahead and leave at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I'm looking at you.
All right, so then that moves us to our up-deck report, which was included with our.
Not quite.
Sorry, I got. Right. Now moving to, all right, to executive session. Okay, so do I have the motion to move to executive session?
So in accordance with section two, part C, exception number 11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, I move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing a legal matter.
Second.
So that's been moved consecutive. Roll call, vote. That passes unanimously. So we move to executive session. Down the hall.
Anderson Cottonwood. I don't know, those things are my passwords.
New contact, Rachel Lenz is on Snap.
Like Tim popped up there. I don't think I need to Snapchat Tim anything. That seems weird. Most are my Snap, they're my dogs.
So we will, that brings us to our next now, so we have our update report. Right, it was really awesome.
Did you have a stroke or something? You cannot find words tonight?
I was sick last week. It's been tough, but, no, it's all good. Alright, so then that brings us to our consent agenda. So, all the action items and information items appearing below are considered routine by the board and shall be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, the items shall be removed and discussed separately, and commissioners have had an opportunity to review these items prior to the board meeting. These items are, this is our example. Approval of the minutes of the April 1st, 2025 executive session. Approval of the minutes of the April 2nd, 2025 executive session. Approval of the minutes of the April 3rd, 2025 executive session. Approval of the minutes of April 5th, 2025 special board meeting workshop meeting. Approval of the minutes of the April 8th, 2025 regular board meeting and executive session. Approval of the minutes of the April 15th, 2025 executive session. Approval of the minutes of the April 15th, 2025 special board meeting. Approval of the minutes of the April 18th, executive session AM and PM. Approval of the minutes of the April 18th, special board meeting AM and PM. Approval of the minutes of the April 19th, executive session. Approval of the minutes of the April 19th, special board meeting. Approval of the minutes of the April 23rd, executive session. Approval of the minutes of the April 23rd, special board meeting. Approval of the minutes of the April 29th, executive session. Approval of the minutes of the April 29th, special board meeting. Approval of the minutes of the May 6th, board study session. Approval of the minutes of the May 13th, annual and regular board meeting. And then our three monthly reports of administrative planning operations and recreation. And then our action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. And approval of the month's monthly paid accounts payable. And action on annual appointments and assignments. Something is a really good example of why we have a consent agenda. Won't take a long time. So, do we have a motion to accept?
I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items as listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
The move is seconded. Laura?
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously. So that moves us to our regular planning report.
Thank you. We will start with our fund balance reports. I'm going to preface my little presentation with, don't have a panic attack when you see every fund balance is negative. The reason for that is good. We normally receive our first tax distributions in May, and we didn't get it until June 6th. And that was over $3 million, so kind of hard to talk about these are what we call negative balances, but there really is a good reason. So page one, this is sum one. This report shows our receipts or revenues and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the first month, one month, starting May 31st of 2025. Page one is listed as sum one. This is all of our funds excluding the capital improvements fund. Here we note that revenues for the period, $348,624. Again, normally we have a tax distribution by now. Total expenditures reflect $822,503. This leaves us with a deficit after one month, meaning there's an excess of expenses over revenues, $472,878. Page two, this is sum two. This is our capital improvements fund by itself. Here we see that total revenues are $1,118. And total expenditures, $3,289. Again, this is giving us a deficit of $2,171. And page three, listed as sum three. This is all funds district-wide, noting here just our bottom line of our ending fund balance. All funds aggregate, $9,895,500. The remaining summary reports are the individual fund balance reports for our three main working funds, which are general, recreation, and museum. And the fourth page, the last page, is our annual pool fund as well. Not much activity there. Were there any questions? Everybody having a negative fund balance? The second report that we'll review is our treasures report. This is a report of the amount of cash the district has on a single day, which is May 31st, 2025. This report shows all of our funds listed down the left, there are 25, and across the top lists where all of our funds are invested. The investment totaling to date, bottom right, $11,407,304. Page two, there's two sections here. The top section lists the amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. So about $11,407,000 on page one. $9,269,381 is out in investments in varying rates. You may notice on this report, if you happen to align it with maybe a previous month or previous period, that the shaded section is where our present set aside is that we've been talking about. And the CDs, we have been maturing them, so that number was the million-dollar number originally. That money has moved up into our savings and operating, so it's still invested. But we've taken it out of CDs and we've moved it up to liquid, if you will, because we know the timeline now. The bottom section is our inter-fund loans. And we did have activity this month, as we typically do in May and June. We did move $75,000 from the rec fund to the indoor pool. This is to cover cash until the school district reembves us. So this is the time of year we're shoring up our end-of-year items, and they'll receive a bill from me here within the next couple of weeks. And they typically pay us that in mid to late July. So until then, we've got to kind of cover until we get those funds in here. And then the last page of our treasures report, this is our list of distributions for the month of May. Here we see vendor payments matching the accounts payable report in the consent agenda. And then the total disbursements of funds, which includes both payroll, and this is a three-payroll month, May, those three payrolls, and our vendors, two total distributions of $1,535,812. Are there any wisher questions on the treasures report? If none, let me present to you the treasures report. And the fifth second, the treasures report.
Ashley?
Aye.
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 Alright, and then we're moving on to our capital budget reports. And I see this is not a high-quality printout, because my orange for May is really kind of yellow and brown, I'm not sure. But I just wanted to discern, because for the next couple of months until the, you know, audit figures, until it's completed, we'll show a couple of months of both April and then the next period, April and May, April and June. Probably not April and July, but for a couple of months. So just to show you a difference of the activity, which column it's in, I tried to color coordinate. So for the month of April. The page one is our 2019A capital budget. And here we had no new revenues, but in April, we had a couple expenditures. $1,680 was expensed to Stark. This was for construction number 12 regarding the Crystal Lake improvements. And then also $9,194 expensed to stocks. This was for additional furniture that we purchased for health and wellness. I think up in the community room or, no, right outside the finish rooms.
Yeah, there's a bench, there were a couple benches and there in the hallway.
Yeah. Those were April expenditures, and then in May, we had an expenditure of $3,290. Again, miscellaneous FNE, I think there were some kettle walls and things like that. Next page is our 2025 budget. We did receive $1,050 in tributes and donations. Item is highlighted in blue, but that should be orange. That was a current May receipt. All the expenditures were April expenditures, $1,283 for tributaries. $7,890, this was for our King Park master planning number one. Under the ADA expenditures, $50,000. It says PRC ramp, that's inaccurate, that was for South Ridge Park number one. Andy, correct me, we only got one bill, right? And it's one and done, we're not going to see more.
For the construction of South Ridge, yeah.
So almost all the other expenditures throughout the other years is the South Ridge number one. It's just, you know, using up what we had set aside everywhere, so you're going to hear this a lot, South Ridge Park number one. And then we did, under equipment, pay the small repair bill for a mower we traded in, $3,212. And then we also purchased Ford Escape, which is the custodian van, for $37,876. 2024, again, it looks like all April expenditures here. End-of-year budgeted transfers are reflected here. $20,000 from the museum for the lighting, part of the lighting project. And then $9,235, I believe this was for the windows during last year. But since this was a transfer from one of the funds over to the capital improvements, it's part of the annual budgeted transfers, so those are posted April 30. Under expenditures, under the Trails Project, $1,076, South Ridge Park number one. Moving to 2023, we did receive, again, this is another one of the end-of-year budgeted transfers, $43,696. This was from Brown Fund. And these were for expenditures related to the Wanda Sculpture Garden. So what happened there was, this transfer should have happened last fiscal year, and it didn't get done, so it's posting now. Trails Project, again, $40,000 to South Ridge Park. Heart Scape and Venting, $24,336, South Ridge Park. On to 2022, under ADA capital expenditure, $65,000, South Ridge Park. 2021, $22,855 is, again, using the ADA line there. And 2020, 2020 had, again, all April. Under ADA, $650 was used, paid to MAT for testing. And $17,510 to South Ridge number one. And then we used the Brighton donation, that $30,000, to finish up the South Ridge invoice. The total of the South Ridge invoice was $253,777. Were there any questions on the projects? Over to Andy and Derek, project updates then. Thanks, everybody.
Just have a few slides tonight. Starting with overall DCO, Weaver KRT project. So I can update a little bit on the Champagne County, Pavilion County portion of work. If you remember the last few months, they've basically been working on the tree removals that had to be completed. The trees had to be felled by April 1st. And so that was done, but it's been removals for the last month and a half or so. We had an update meeting last Friday, and I think they're pretty much all done with the tree removal portion of the work, other than maybe some minor punch list items. So now they're moving into preparing for bidding for the trail portion itself. And that will include the concrete bridge work. If you remember some of our previous updates on the status of that bridge. And so, schedule-wise, they're looking to have a bid out probably in early July. And depending on how long they want to keep the bid open, they may have an award at the Champagne County Forest Preserve District Regular Board Meeting in August. But potentially, they may hold it open a little bit later to get more bidders and have an award in September. So, moving over to our project, we've been on hold here a little bit. We're waiting on the engineered shop drawings for the prefabricated pavilion structure itself. So we've had a little bit of earthwork done, we've had some soil testing. We have a separate contract for construction testing as well. So we did some compaction tests where Pavilion will be. And everything's good there, but they're not able to do any of the flat work, basically, until we have those engineered drawings. And the key item is the bolt connections, so that when they pour the concrete, they're prepared to receive the new structure. So it's not a big surprise, we've kind of been updating as we go, that we're likely going to have a couple periods during our construction phase where we're going to have to wait on this pavilion structure. So we should be getting those engineered drawings any day. And once we do, I anticipate Mid-Illinois to be back on site and getting everything prepared for that delivery. And what could happen down the road is, once the engineered shop drawings are received and approved, that's really going to trigger the fabrication of the structure itself. So Mid-Illinois is going to come in and prepare for the Pavilion. But there also may be a time later this summer where we're doing another waiting period, and we got to wait for the Pavilion to actually be delivered to the site before we can do all of our other Pavilion work, masonry, electrical, plumbing, all the finishes. Obviously, it can't happen until we have that structure. So that's where we're standing currently on the trail ahead.
My KRT, Andy also mentioned that we've been able to talk with MOC7 recently. Representatives of the Ziski's aides, Hopland Establishing Connection. Things are moving again. They're looking at all the current easements that they have, and we're working with IDOT to document that they're supportive of trail development. So we're connected to lease or purchase. So we're hopeful that things will line up. I know that the Forest Reserve District is going to plan on moving ahead and then pull it fortunately out from their bid and word it later. Similarly, the city is working on the Baker Sunning Trail, they may pull that as well and work later. But we're at least moving now with the MOC7.
I wanted to kind of bring attention to another kind of small capital project. We actually had some funds in 2024 that was for addressing repainting of the ceiling and the first, called first floor of the Pavilion out of Coral Park. As we've kind of gotten more investigating, there's actually some masonry work that's needing repairs as well. We have a quote last year to repair some of the... Uh, we have a quote last year, um, to repair some of the, the joints, the caulk joints in between the, the stone, um, also clean it. We've had some stones that actually broke off on a couple places, so reattaching and then, um, doing a sealant and protectant for graffiti as well as part of that. When we were looking at the ceiling, um, initially I was just thinking that we would need to repaint or replaster. We're actually seeing more concrete damage as well, so, uh, Derek had actually had a recommendation for a concrete group that specializes in restoring, uh, concrete structures, you know, similar to what we have here. Um, and so we've had them come to the site and just doing a little bit of investigation, basically had a couple hammers and he was, you know, hitting the concrete, the portion of the ceiling, trying to hear different sounds of where potentially we have damage. So where there's markers of these, you know, rectangles and hash marks in between is where the concrete was sounding like we could potentially have some damage, uh, underneath. Um, up top, uh, we went up on the floor of the second, uh, floor of the pavilion, and everything sounded good. Um, so what, you know, in discussions with him, you know, it's kind of odd to me at first why we were having all this damage on the bottom of the slab and not at the top, but he's saying this is pretty common because you have water that's going through the concrete, and then it's damaging out at the bottom where it more settles and comes out, and then it work, the damage kind of works its way from the bottom to the top. So right now he's anticipating, and we won't know until we get further into it, um, what all of our options are, but doing, um, three inches of restoration of the concrete on that first floor ceiling. The second floor on to the ground is sounding pretty good, so, um, we're in still pretty early stages on, on what our options are there, but I just something to bring to the board's attention that, um, we will have some capital funds that we're looking to apply for the Carl Pavilion here in the near future. Is that a help or story?
This whole project was last done probably fifteen, twenty years ago, and at that time we had, uh, Kirby Dooster work, we worked with IGW to do a lot of the concrete work. Um, one of the things that we're starting to wonder about is, you know, how critical is this floor for the second story? It's an old bench shelf, um, nobody ever goes up there, uh, and so if we find out there's some major issues with it, uh, we've, we've reached in talking with PACA, uh, their sort of our local historical group, about kind of their, their, their perspective on, on the importance of maintaining this, this second floor. Um, there used to be a stairwell there, you can kind of see where it was, um, that got removed because kids were taking cable up there back in the day. A lot of interesting things took place in the building over the years, so it's a beautiful structure, uh, it's, it's, uh, we actually think the gates really add a lot to its, its, uh, its beauty, especially if it's not even split up, um, but we, you know, when we came to secure this, this floor, maybe something we want to look at more critically for its need in the future.
And last thing I wanted to mention, uh, you know, everyone's kind of been seeing the updates for our overall master planning process for King Park and, uh, our goal to apply for OSLAB grant later this summer. As part of the overall, uh, planning process, we actually have an RFP out for the playground portion for the replacement, and that's due this Friday. So we've basically provided the footprint with the approximate square foot, uh, area that we'd be looking to replace our playground, uh, with new equipment, and we're trying to leave it fairly open to all of our playground sales representatives, um, to basically, you know, dream big and what they can do for us. We had, um, we're definitely looking for a two to five and a five to 12. Uh, we'd like to try to get as many play, um, factors as possible that we can include in the equipment itself, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a, a budget, and that's just the equipment only, so that doesn't include any surfacing, under drainage, the curb, nothing else other than just the equipment. Uh, and then we're looking at theming opportunities as well in the park. So we gave three kind of broader categories that we would like to see, um, proposals come in for, and each group can submit up to two proposals. Um, and the themes could include Martin Luther King Jr.'s message and legacy, uh, the King Elementary School, the monarch mascot, uh, while we're doing steering committee meetings, we learned that there are over thirty languages spoken in, in the student population, so celebrating that diversity in the elementary school, uh, next door, and then also our own Park District's You Belong Here initiative. So it's, it's kind of been left open at that, we'll get proposals on Friday. Staff will internally review the proposals, and then the plan is to move forward with some selected options, um, for a public input, uh, opportunity at Jettie Rhodes Day, and then we'll utilize all the information that we've gathered, uh, from that and our own, uh, internal review, and then, um, have a selective playground that will be a part of the application for OSLAB and included in the project. So hopefully next, uh, update, I'll be able to share some playground, uh, options with you. And that's it, that's all I have.
I was going to share with everyone Miss Rayanne Lindsay, U.S., Miss USA Little Chair. She texted me tonight before the meeting, just, she heard, I think, a playground group is wanting a reference from her, but she said if, if we wanted any kind of, uh, assistance or any kind of input, she'd be willing to help. I know we had contact, talked to her at the, um, metal book, and, um, she's definitely interested in helping with the CUSR, uh, playground, um, but she literally just texted me, I was like, this evening, just wondering if, if you'd be interested.
Thank you. Um, that brings our executive director report.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to start off by saying how great going for the world of the community, not only from the board, but the staff as well, um, and so many of us, the, the urban community. There's been a real sense of pride and advocacy, and I, I felt that in every interaction that I've had, that you have so far. I have quite a list of people and organizations that I have, uh, got to interact with, so forgive me while I read, I just don't want to leave anybody out. Um, so these couple weeks have been full of meaningful conversation and opportunities to listen and learn. There are several interactions that were vacant, I'd like to highlight. I attended a SUNA neighborhood meeting, I had the chance to meet Mayor Williams, Police Chief Bloom, Prior Chief Dave, and many other community partners and Urban Park District supporters. I've been immersed in the King Park Master Planning process, participated in the Honduras against stewardship committee meeting with Urban Parks Foundation. I've also connected with leadership at the Champagne County Forest Preserve District, spoke with staff from Congresswoman Benzi's office, had a productive meeting with the North Pole Southern, uh, regarding potential lease or acquisition, which you heard, uh, from, uh, from Derek. Um, I was very encouraged by the initial meeting with the Urban School District Superintendent Director's facilities and their CFO to talk to and share facilities and future planning. Each of these conversations reinforces the value of partnership in everything we do. What's helped to me the most so far, though, um, truly is the strength of this team. I've spent time with, uh, throughout the facilities with Tim, and got a lot of history on, uh, you know, how these parks came to be and the process of how they came to what they are now. I met with our, uh, staff leadership, and I, I just recently started hearing firsthand, um, really what drives our staff's work, and so it's really clear to me that this district is powered by the, um, passionate committed professionals who really believe in our mission, and that's a really powerful place, um, for us to start from. So, looking ahead, I'll be continuing to meet, uh, one-on-one with our leadership, uh, and management team, um, with some programs, have the opportunity to go to a, a neighborhood night, a volunteer recognition, uh, event that the staff put on, um, so just really looking forward to attending more of those in the future. And deepening conversations that truly help shape how I lead and where we go together. So, I'm honored to be here and excited for what lies ahead and for all the continued successes that, um, I get to hear about, you know, quirky, uh, players, so she has some pretty exciting news. And just this evening, uh, shared some pretty stellar numbers for our health and wellness and everyone.
Yeah. So it's been a while since I've, uh, shared the numbers with you, so I thought, well, if Laura or Rachel's wanting to do that, let's, uh, let's do that. I was looking for Laura to send. Um, so, so far, the numbers I'm giving you are from when we opened, the grand opening was January 4th, uh, to June 10th, so total visits so far at the facility, so it's roughly five months. Um, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-one visits.
What?
Um, OSF scholarships, we've given out, sorry, I gotta blow this one. Uh, we have given out seventeen thousand six hundred and forty-one of the thirty thousand dollars, which comes up to two hundred and nineteen memberships. We have two hundred and thirty-eight Silver Sneakers memberships. Uh, we've got two other plans that are kind of new in the makings, one is well on target, which is through Blue Cross Blue Shield, which offers opportunities from eighteen on up. Um, only have three of those, and we have another one called Prime, which I can't tell you much about that one yet, but that's another, another new opportunity, right access. Um, if everybody's sitting down, I'll tell you to hear. Total memberships, our target and our, uh, performer was eight hundred. We're at one thousand five hundred and sixty-five memberships. Um, so, to say the least, the facility's taken off well, and, um, I'm actually quite surprised now that the weather's getting a little nicer, we're still have a lot of people there. Camp started on Monday, again, you know, the vision for community room is for meetings for partners and whoever wants to rent it, that kind of stuff, but it was also more of an informal where we could have camps, and so seeing that room full of kids in camp, and they're coming in the back door instead of coming through the membership, um, it's just working out just like the plan, so, um, I have nothing but good news to report on that, so.
Just wait till we can ask Washbad in.
So I will say, um, we are hosting the, the I Parks Board in, uh, in Urbana in July, and when I was trying to figure out where we were going to host it, I, you know, my first book is The Hawk, and that was booked, and so I was like, oh, shoot, the Lighthouse. No, that's also a book, so, and then, yeah, what a testament to, you know, the, the community utilizing those spaces, so, uh, it's an exciting problem to have.
Do we have any data of like where the people who got memberships, like where they live in Urbana, like how many are in that surrounding neighborhood versus?
Uh, we do have addresses, so yes, we can look that up, we don't. I did mention that one time, like the AI, Placing AI stuff, so I do know the city of Urbana has it, and the forest preserve, and there may be opportunities for us to check with it. The one thing I will say about the Placing AI, so I'm not really convinced on it yet, but especially this program, because when we, we had like three demos within, the very first demo was right after the turkey trot, and we knew, because we do numbers counts, and we, we estimate around two thousand, which is usually fairly accurate. They told us eight hundred. So I wasn't no convinced on their system, and then they, then they talked about, well, it depends on the length of the event, and so, still learning more.
Yeah. I'm just glad that our efforts to kind of get that part of the neighborhood.
It would be, it still would be difficult for us to get exactly without going through one thousand five hundred memberships and then pull it up, but, um, I just had a phone call this afternoon, uh, lady and her, uh, older son, they live right across the street, and I helped them a couple years ago, so she's been tears on the phone, and I said, we got you. So anyhow, we keep continuing to get more people from the neighborhood, uh, so I can look into any more data we may have through active, but, um, we'll see.
Yeah. Um, with that, uh, there's a next to, oh, my report, President's report. Uh, well, I'll just quickly go over, um, we have upcoming, our upcoming meetings, um, we have our, there will be update on the 24th, and there will be no study session in July, and then our next way report meeting will be on the 8th, um, where we will talk about, where we will hold our public care and uncombined budget and appropriations ordinance.
That will move to July or whatever.
Gotcha. Um, we will adopt and approve budget, update these agreement, a, and then semi-annual review, or there will be an executive session as well to, uh, review reports. Um, and then no update in July. Um, and then, you know, obviously there's the, uh, Jettie Rhodes Day.
June 28th. Juneteenth celebration and neighborhood night are combined this year.
Right. I saw that.
So that's all Wednesday night, uh, the Prairie Park Park.
Just the man who had the beginning of the proclamation, it's kind of, but just for it's, I think that's, New Souls is for him.
All right, well, that sounds like a good one to mark our calendars. All right, um, so that brings us to our liaison reports. Um, okay, it's not here, um, so for finance study group, we have not met, um, yet, but I'm assuming that we will put in plans to meet soon.
Yep.
All right. Um, policy study group.
Couldn't tell you, I haven't had one, but looking forward to it.
I think I'm going to serve on that.
Is that?
Yeah, that was the final. Yeah, and your back and forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, and then the, uh, Parks Foundation members, uh, Meredith's not here, um, and then, uh, update planning study group.
That is, we just, we've put an agenda together, we won't convene for a while.
Okay. Um, so then that brings us to old business, which I believe there's none, um, and then that moves to new business, um, which over the end of our amended agenda, brings the active for Bucy Woods Bridge replacement. Andy or Derek?
Yeah, um, so I'll kind of give a little bit of background, I know we've been updating the board as we've gone through the whole process with our evaluations of the bridges, um, but in 2023, we did a evaluation with ERA of almost all of our district bridges. Um, the Bucy Woods Bridge, we did have a recommendation to repair and/or replace that structure, um, so that kind of moved us into a phase two study, you could say, with ERA, and we're looking at multiple options, and that would be repairing the existing structure, um, repairing the existing structure but making some modifications to its width, and then we also looked at a prefabricated, uh, bridge replacement in its existing location that's similar to our last two bridge replacements, uh, we've done in Crystal Lake Park for the ITEP project, uh, over Broadway, and then what was the sanitary district project, um, on the west side of Crystal Lake Park there. Uh, and then we also, we're going to look at an option where we replaced the existing structure with a brand-new, uh, bridge that would be built, uh, onsite, so basically non, uh, prefabricated. Uh, during that process, uh, we had an opportunity to apply for a DCO grant, uh, funding for that, uh, project, and that was an application to replace the existing bridge, uh, with the prefabricated, uh, structure, and, uh, once we received notice that we would get an award for that, that kind of put a stop to our phase two study of all of our options. We knew that that's the route we were going to go. Uh, so at that point, it's basically waiting for that period where all of our contract documents are in place with the grant so that we could start accumulating expenses, so we could start doing work for the project where we would get reimbursement, basically. Uh, and so we got that notice in March or April of this year, so then that triggered us, um, to then reengage with Jake Wolf, uh, with ERA, and start developing a proposal, um, that we have, uh, tonight, it's attached to the memo, uh, and that would take us through, um, survey, um, all preliminary design, structural, gets our bidding documents, plans, specifications, will get us through bidding, through the construction observation, supervision, uh, the whole project for engineering. So that's what we have tonight, uh, in front of you, uh, with our recommendation, so that total, um, contract is for forty-three thousand nine hundred dollars with ERA. Um, we're recommending a 10% contingency as well, so that's four thousand three hundred and ninety. Um, overall schedule, we're looking to hopefully have this bid, um, Overall schedule, we're looking to hopefully have this bid this winter, so we could potentially have a recommendation for award to you all next January, February, March. Bridges have apparently even longer lead times than pavilions, so construction would probably not really start until late summer. And it's probably going to be site prep before we're going to get in that whole kind of thing again. And then we're going to need engineered shop drawings from them, prepare the site, and then wait for the delivery of the bridge there as well. So that's probably going to happen fall of '26 and maybe into '27, depending on how things go. So budget-wise, I kind of put the whole project budget, what we're looking at, not just engineering, everything that we've got. So we have the $450,000, the DCO grant. During the capital planning process, when we do the five-year plan, we're also currently anticipating setting aside $100,000 for a BUC bridge in 2026. So that's something that you'll probably see here in the fall once we have a draft 2026 budget and a recommendation to approve that one as well. And then we have $50,000 available through COSR reserve funds. And so basically, what we're doing is, if our estimate when we were applying for the grant, you know, was getting us a $450,000 project, obviously, costs could be fluctuating over time, and we could see, you know, increases in steel or prefabricated bridges that maybe are unanticipated. So this will allow us to be prepared to have local funds where we can kind of, you know, be able to address those overages and get the project done. So tonight, it's really just the engineering portion of it. Again, it's that $43,900 with a 10% contingency. Happy to answer any questions?
Mentioned these DCO funds, the initial video was from Senator Bennett, and then brought in their $1,000 to the project.
So the Urbana Park District Board Commissioners, I am with the Urbana Park District Board Commissioners, award design services for the Bucy Woods Bridge replacement project in the amount of $43,900, and a 10% contingency of $4,390 to Engineering Resources Associates of Champagne, Illinois.
And it's been moved and seconded. Something I realized that I was forgetting is that there is an opportunity for us to discuss these things after it's been moved and so that, you know, so just to remind our commissioners that you do have the opportunity to discuss this, even if it's already been moved, in case there's to be more questions or whatever, maybe. But here are none. Roll call vote, kind of, Ashley.
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously. And so then we would move to any new business removed from our consent agenda, which was none. So then the floor goes to comments from commissioners.
I attended the CUSR Summer Bash on Monday night. Yeah, it was last night, come on, gosh. It feels like it was like a week ago. Here's the really exciting thing. Three of our campers, three of our after-school students who didn't come, or students, campers, I guess you'd call them, the after-school program, who didn't go last year, went this year because they promoted it in the Urbana study. So that was super exciting. And then I knew a lot of the participants, talked to everybody, I volunteered. But what was really cool is 30%, 32% of the people who attended were from Urbana. So I was really excited about that, too. So I think, you know, some of the new advertised, some of the things we're doing are helping, but it was a really fun event.
Means it's probably about a third of the size, right?
Yeah, right. So I thought that was, that was awesome. Thank you to everybody for that. That was really a good time.
Well, then that brings us to the end of our agenda. So we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.